Welcome, everybody, to our organizational meeting. Today is April 15, 2014, and I do call this meeting to order. We will start with the oath of office for the newly-elected officials by the city clerk. Those individuals are... raise your hand.
Alan, Deb.
Do you want to just come on down here in front? Now, how are you?
This works really good. This thing isn't humming or bouncing.
If that's what you like, then that's what we can set you up at. I'll put that in your info.
Then at the end of each meeting, I just hand it back to you.
The way we always do this is, you know, you raise your right hand, say aye if you state your name, and then I'll read the whole statement, and you can say aye or no. Please raise your right hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye.
Having been elected to the position of mayor and/or alderperson for the city of Opaaca, to affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of said office to the best of my ability under the penalties of perjury.
I will.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I've got something for you to sign. Actually, I'm given six pens, so if you'll please take a pen, I'll pass these around.
Short straw.
Short one that's in there.
And you can leave them with me.
Oh, I'm sorry, right at the top.
Yep, right there.
First block.
Thank you.
Congratulations, new aldermen.
Yes, thank you.
You learned, Dave.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Hi, congratulations.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
The certificate? Election. Here we go. That picture, shoot. We would like to get a picture of all of us. I can't multitask.
Everyone or just us? Just the newbies.
Lack me, Stan.
It's Andy Fotoban.
Or I could do some of these.
Yeah, the camera's gonna explode. Henry, are we okay?
I think so.
Do you have one of the...
In a pen?
All righty, thanks.
Okay, at this time, then, this, as I said before, is our organizational meeting. So this is where we set up the committees and also elect a council president. We do have an agenda in front of you with no additional handouts, so let's start with that. First of all, let's get a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keel and second by Lockwood that we approve the agenda as printed. All in favor is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, we have election of our council president. We would need nominations.
I'd like to nominate Paul Mayo.
Second.
Alderperson Fenske has nominated Paul Mayo for council president. Are there any other nominations? Will the nominations be closed? We need a second for that.
Second.
Yep. We... motion by Keel and second by Hackett that the nominations be closed. And since we have just one nomination for that, we would be voting in favor of that. All in favor of Paul Mayo as your council president? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. I will turn it over to our council president, then, and to explain to everyone which committees and boards you are on for the next year, as well as citizens at large. Paul?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I just got the script here. I apologize. All right.
Why were you late?
I just got the script. All right, here are the mayor's appointments to various boards, commissions, and committees. Mayor Smith appointed the following persons to the Board of Review, Board of Appeals, and City Plan Commission. Board of Review, Alderman Paul Hagan, Alderman Jillian Peterson. Board of Appeals, Brian Gildenman, Alderman Eric Olson, Joel Caiman. For the City Plan Commission, Mayor Smith nominates Alderman Alan Keeland as the council member for the City Plan Commission, and I would need a motion to accept this nomination.
So moved.
Second.
By Lockwood, second by Hackett, that council will accept the mayor's nomination of Alderman Alan Keeland for the City Plan Commission. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed no, motion carries. Mayor Smith has appointed the following persons to the Library Board, Park and Rec Board, Police and Fire Commission, Airport Board, Community Development Authority, Recycling District, Opaaca Area Fire District, Historic Preservation Commission, Emergency Planning Committee, Community Development Block Grant Committee, Weyhaa Board of Directors, the Historical Society, Joint Review Board, Room Tax Committee, Oz Property Ad-Hoc Committee, East Central Planning Commission, and Opaaca Area Chamber of Commerce Tourism Promotion Library Board, Lenora Jansen, Youth Representative, Elizabeth Olson, Alternative... alternate Youth Representative, Alderperson Jillian Peterson, Alderperson Paul Hagan, Mary Trice, Glenda Rhodes. Park and Recreation Board, Matthew Waldschmidt, Youth Representative, Nicole Rich, Youth Representative, Dana Guskey, Flo Young, Alderperson Dave Peterson, Alderperson Eric Olson, Chairperson. Police and Fire Commission, Alderperson Steve Hackett. Airport Board, Ryan Johnson, Youth Representative, Alex Godo, Alternate Youth Representative, John Gussmer, Jeff Lang. Community Development Authority, Mayor Brian Smith, Alderman John Lockwood, Archie Overby. Recycling District, Alderperson Alan Keeland, Alderperson Scott Pachatsky, Alternate. Opaaca Area Fire District, Mayor Brian Smith, Alderperson Steve Hackett, Alternate. Historic Preservation Commission, Alderperson Deb Fenske, Diana Chu, Youth Representative, Diane Midkiff, Claudia Crumsey. CDBG Housing Committee, Alderperson Dave Peterson, John Ryan, Chairperson, Julie Thompson, Paula Pozwisch, Dick Phillipson. Emergency Planning Committee, Alderperson Paul Mayo, Chairperson, Annalisa Shaw, Andy Carlin, Steve Fenske, Alderperson Deb Fenske, Eric Helverson, Sharon Sore, Cynthia Fenske, Youth Representative, Jeff Olson, Bryant Esch, Valerie Heiss, Nick Cluppert, Jack Tomlinson, and Terry Harrington. Weyhaa Board, Alderperson John Lockwood. Historical Society, Alderperson Deb Fenske. Joint Review Board, Alderperson Steve Hackett. Oz Property Ad-Hoc Committee, Alderperson Scott Pachatsky, Chairperson, Russ Montgomery, Kay Edelbeck, Russ Butkowitz, Kerry Isbenson, Christie Jackson, Hugh Hayes, Connie Abert. East Central Planning Commission, Mayor Brian Smith, Alderperson Paul Mayo, Alternate. Room Tax Committee, Alderperson Paul Mayo, Chairperson, Alderperson Alan Keeland, Dave Habichorst, Jayton Batra, Terry Schultz, Kent Pagorsch, Scott Newman. Opaaca Area Chamber of Commerce Tourism Promotion Committee, Alderperson John Lockwood. This time, I would need a motion to approve the mayor's nominations to these committees and boards.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Keeland, second by Fenske, to approve the nomination of these people to these commissions and boards and committees. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed no, motion carries. Back to you, Mayor.
Thanks. Appreciate it. As you know, the names that... or if you don't know, the names that Council President Paul Mayo has listed to you were just new names that were on those committees. I think on your desk, you do have the full list of everybody that's on each one of those committees and commissions and boards, and you will find that if you were on that committee last year, just look on there and make sure that you're still on that. For example, Eric Olson is still on the City Planning Commission, although we didn't say his name, that he is still on that board. Anything else for the organizational meeting? If not, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion we adjourn?
Second.
Motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we adjourn the organizational meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, let's go right into the regular agenda, then. Thanks. Welcome, everybody, to our regular scheduled council meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 15, 2014, and I call this meeting to order, and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Statue of Republic, where which stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'll ask Sandy to read the clerk's open meeting statement for us.
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the press in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes, so that citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And would you also take a roll for us, Sandy?
Brian Smith.
Here.
Steve Hackett.
Here.
Deb Fenske.
Here.
Paul Hagan.
Here.
Alan Keeland.
Here.
Scott Pachatsky.
Here.
Dave Peterson.
Here.
Paul Mayo.
Here.
John Lockwood.
Here.
Jillian Peterson.
Here.
And Eric Olson.
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Okay, we have the consent agenda. That is items that we will vote on with one motion. Are there any items on the consent agenda that council would like to see move from the consent agenda to the regular agenda, where you would vote on that individual item? If not, we would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Keel and second by Hackett that we approve the consent agenda as printed. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Next, you have the regular agenda. There are no additional handouts. Anything that council or staff saw that should be adjusted before we start?
Mayor, if I could ask, item number eight under item nine, new business, I have code read, project update. I do have a member of the Opaaca County Emergency Management Team here tonight to answer any questions or concerns of the council, if we could possibly move that up to number one.
Everybody okay with that? If we move that up to... So it'd be... are you asking for this to go number one under new business?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So number eight is number one, number one is number two? No, okay, let's go. Are we all right with that, everybody? Okay. Anything else? All right, we're looking for a motion to approve that amended agenda. Motion by Lockwood, second by Keel, that we approve the regular agenda with that one change. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under non-agenda items and announcements, we have the Arbor Day proclamation. Do you have anybody in the audience tonight? I don't think so. Sorry, Sandy, I don't have it up here, so... Thank you. Okay, we do have a proclamation for Arbor Day. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed in the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees are renewable resources giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products, and whereas trees, whenever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, whereas Opaq has been recognized as Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I, Brian Smith, Mayor of the city of Opaaca, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the 25th of April, 2014, as Arbor Day in the city of Opaaca, and I urge all citizens to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to support our city's urban forestry program, and further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. And that is just read in for the record. Next, we have a Earth Day proclamation, and I'll read that one also. In the early 1960s, Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin began a movement to highlight mounting environmental problems. Over three decades later, Earth Day continues to promote environmental awareness and celebrate the limitless possibilities for all people to care for land, air, rivers, lakes, and oceans. Earth Day is an international phenomenon observed in more than 180 countries spanning every continent. Individuals and communities come together with a unified purpose to address issues such as climate change, species extinction, management growth, economics, and energy technology. Whereas the city of Opaaca's lands, waters, air, and other natural resources should be protected and preserved at all cost, this goal of environmental sustainability is the legacy we wish to leave for those who follow us. And whereas the city of Opaaca supports and strengthens its commitment to the environment by working together to protect these natural resources is essential to the continued quality of life of the residents of the Badger State, and whereas the city of Opaaca recognizes a spirit of Earth Day as a global event that celebrates environmental achievements and raises awareness for environmental issues and provides a unique opportunity for people across the state and nation to promote environmental stewardship by setting goals and taking actions to lessen the negative impact on the environment. Now therefore, I, Mayor Brian Smith, on behalf of the city of Opaaca, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2014, as Earth Day, and welcome the support of all residents in our quest to create a clean, green, and healthy Opaaca. All right, next, we move on to the public input section. If we have anybody that's in the audience that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item, please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and limit your discussion to five minutes or less. Anybody that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, we'll move on to department announcements and reports, and we'll start with Jean Peterson. Jean?
Mayor, as you can see from my reports, the city as a whole on all their budgets are right in target with the 25% of the year finished, and our cash flow looks really well. On the last mayor's meeting, we talked about the cold winter we had, so I did a little summary on page 25 of our heat bills, and we have passed... our expenses for 2014 passed the total we spent in '13, the whole year. And I even... we even increased '14's budget for heat, so I think we're having a little trouble with that budget. But we'll keep an eye on it, and I did look at the electrics on target and everything, so I don't know.
Wear a sweater.
It was... yeah, it was a... we had electric heaters in our office, too, because of the cold. And one other thing I thought I should share is that I talked with the mayor today, and I informed him I'm going to retire at the end of October, and you'll have a letter in your packet next week explaining it. So there's some exciting news from my office.
I had a quick question. On your summary there, Jean, you had Public Works Garage.
Yes.
Does that include all of the facilities, just the one? Okay.
Correct.
Be careful, Alan, she might retire sooner if you keep this up.
So if there's any questions on any other budget items or lineums, please come into the office, and we'll find answers for you. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jean. Good luck to you. Peg, library.
Well, it is National Library Week, and I did distribute bookmarks. There are businesses within our community who are celebrating. When you go into their business and show your library card, they'll give you a special promotion or discount. So take advantage of that, please, and let them know how much you appreciate your library and their business. It's also National Library Worker Day today, so thank your librarians. There is also, along with National Library Week, Culvers is having a youth picture contest, and they're asking everybody to make a picture of their favorite book and bring it in, and they'll get a free cone from Culvers. So we want to take advantage of that, too, with your youngsters. Our Peeps Show exhibit started last yesterday and is through April 19. You'll have to go in and see what a fun idea it was for the community to create dioramas out of marshmallows. Our Sink the Bismarck film is on May 1 with Dr. Jack Rhodes. April 26, we have a new program that is going to be starting. It's Opaaca Sustainable Table, and each month on a Friday or a Saturday at noon, we're going to be talking about sustainability and eating local, and the first program is the 26th of April, and it's about community-sustained agriculture at noon on that Saturday. So we hope you'll join us next week. May 13, we're remembering the Battle of Midway at a luncheon learn. Please sign up at the library. And this week, we are closing at 1:00 p.m. on Friday, and we are closed Saturday. So I hope everybody has a nice little spring break. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Peg. Brennan?
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Just a couple of updates on some of the projects that we're working on right now. The council went through their third strategic planning meeting a couple... a little bit over a week ago. Overall, that meeting went extremely well. We gathered a lot of information. Due to the complexity of that meeting, we have unfortunately had to add a fourth meeting, per se, but it's going to be during the regular council meeting. That's what we're tentatively planning right now. So session four, which is scheduled for May 13, is going to be a continuation of the discussion of the action strategies for the six goals that the council identified at the previous meeting. And then we're tentatively looking at June 3 as a draft presentation to the city council. We are also going to be and still need to have a discussion, looking at bringing in some regional representatives, other members that are not on the working committee right now, but that do serve our community and serve our area when it comes to economic development initiatives. Also looking to reach out to the business community and have them at that meeting as well, so we're looking at possibly an alternative location for the June 3 meeting as well. Just a couple of the projects I'm working on right now. Main Street, we're going to be having our next meeting in May, and that one's going to be more of a walk-in tour of the downtown. Also, so we're still working on the objective for that meeting, but it's going to be kind of a historical tour, but also we'll get the council, hopefully, and the members that are on the committee, as long as it's warm outside, an opportunity to be able to identify places within the downtown area that they signify as important places and important areas that they would like to enhance and improve. We're also going to be taking a look at other issues as well, you know, road conditions, building facades, everything else, so working on towards that. The interns, both of them are helping on this project right now. We have a new parking count and parking study that was done by one of our interns that we're preparing that map for right now, doing a lot of data collection at the moment, and now we're working on a project to actually get a pre-construction questionnaire out to all businesses. One of the most important things throughout this process is going to be transparency and making sure everyone's aware of the project. And we will be getting to actually go into the buildings probably within the next week to meet with all the business owners and landowners and kind of get a better understanding of how they utilize the building on the other floors other than the Main Street level. South Park, luckily with the warmer weather, has finally started moving. The blocks should be done by the end of this week. The steel is up. The trusses should be installed by the end of this week, so the building is starting to take form and shape out there, which is good. We are still on target for construction, you know, and the building to be ready by the 4th of July, but probably targeting mid-June for substantial completion on that project. And overall, the department's just working on some other internal projects right now. That'll be seeing updates on the website within the next month or so. That's all I have.
Awesome. Thanks, Brennan. Next, we have John Edelbeck, Public Works.
Okay, as you know, our trickle order has been suspended as of this Monday.
Okay, as you know, our trickle order has been suspended as of this Monday. We are dealing with a frozen water main that froze last week and we're trying to replace that line actually on Shearer Street. We're replacing what, half a block? We had three breaks on that half-block area due to a frozen main and actually didn't, it cracked along the top and bottom of the pipe some distance, so we're replacing that out. We did submit to the county, and Andy can tell you all about it, a request for emergency grant money if the state is so declared, an emergency situation with the winter weather. So we did submit some information to him and if this does go through, we will have to submit obviously quite a bit more. It deals with overtime for, and materials for water and wastewater utility. Spring leaf and brush pickup is coming up. We did push that back a little bit because of the weather. But people are, are, we do request that you put your leaves out in clear plastic bags and then the brush in pile, in piles, we will pick those up. And again, we don't pick up loose leaves because when we do that with our Vector or our leaf machine, the rocks and stones from the winter weather will damage our equipment if we try to vacuum that up. So that's why we do request that it be bagged. We will pick up the bags and we do pick up brush as well. I talked a bit about this before, but we'll be seeing some more information on the Chain of Lake Sanitary District Agreement and we'll be working hopefully with a consultant who will bring in a proposal together to help us rewrite that 20-year-old agreement to take us into the next hopefully 20 years and address some current issues. We will be putting together a bid package for a grit separator at the treatment plant and we've been working with a couple of different vendors, so we should get some good bids on that. Again, we haven't, we haven't really started the bid preparation for that yet. We're applying for an FCC wireless SCADA radio license renewal, so that's our, our water and wastewater utility. We operate on a, on a radio frequency, a wireless radio frequency. We have to get that renewed, so we're working with Northway on that, a private contractor to help us renew that license. Our wastewater treatment plant DNR discharge permit is up for review. It's been at the DNR for a year or two now, ready for issuance. But I believe we're looking at July 1st and we'll be presenting, once we get the permit from them, we'll be presenting any changes or anything that are, that really is germane to the, the new permit, what's different, and we'll just give you a summary or update on that. We don't expect that there'll, there'll be substantial financial impacts to the city, however, we will have to, there are some things that we will in the next few years have to implement per that new agreement. And one is a operation and maintenance manual for our wastewater collection system. And I'll get into that more over the next year or two. May 10th, we have a Riverage Trail Work Day at Swan Park. If anyone is interested, we'll be working from 9:00 to 12:00. We meet at the main pavilion at Swan. We're going to be working on the north loop trail this year. Again, three hours, haul some wood chips and we'll have lunch there available for you. We do get grant money from Thrivant and that money then goes into the Friends of the Parks Fund for that. So we'll get anywhere from 10 to 30 people at that event and hopefully you can make it. Be great to see some council support on that event. Public Works Week is coming up in May. We've got a number of different activities and we'll be hearing more about that coming up. And then as of March 31st, 25% of the budget has taken place here, 25% of the year. Street division is at 23%. Water division is at 18. Sewer division is at 16. And of the 23% in the street division, our snow and ice control budget will, will see who, anybody that's read my minutes, don't give out the answer, but what do you, other, other you guys guess we're at percentage-wise? This is calendar year for snow and ice budget.
Roughly 78%.
Roughly around 78%. Good guess, right? Yeah, we're at 78% and that was of, that was as of a couple of weeks ago, so no more snow and ice.
All right, thanks.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Pen Shining for Aaron is, Andrew Whitman.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron does have his report in there if you have any questions on that. You can feel free to ask, I'll try to answer it the best I can. Though it doesn't seem like it, we are in full swing of summer activities coming up. We just finished up with our registration on baseball and softball. We are down about six people in baseball, but up 12 in softball. So overall, we're up this year. We had a pretty big class leave from baseball last year and that's where we lost a couple of people. But big numbers in the junior league, which is our young league. I think we have six teams in both leagues and that's up from last year of six and five. So we're doing pretty good with that. We have mini-kickers camp coming up starting next week, hopefully outside at the high school. That's two to five-year-olds playing, playing outdoors, just having a lot of fun and learning skills. It's a challenger sports group that comes in and does that. So if not outside, we have, we'll have them inside as well and it'll be a good time no matter what for those kids. Youth softball and baseball both held camps before tryouts, which are over as well. Very well attended. Did really well this year on, on both camps. I don't know exactly if they're up or down, but everyone was happy with both of the boards on that one. Couple of things that are coming up that we're working on, that Aaron and I are trying to put together. August 8th is a date that we're going to work towards a family movie night in the park. So trying to utilize our parks a little bit more in off-peak time, so August 8th. We may be asking everyone in the city what their favorite movie is to try to decide what movie to show. So we want it to be a family night, inexpensive, come on out, have a good time, get the family together, utilize our parks and show a good family movie. So we're going to be moving forward with that. Also moving forward with outdoor pickleball. Does anybody play pickleball in here? No? It's becoming one of the most popular sports for, and I don't mean this in a bad way, for older, older population. That's not why I asked the question. We, right now we have.
Are you still on probation?
Yeah, I was on probation, I'm now fired, I believe. So pickleball twice per week, we have three hours and we probably have, I would say about 30 people on average that come and play for the full three hours. And so what I'm trying to work on right now is moving that outdoors and working with the high school and making some pickleball courts off their tennis courts. And hopefully that turns into a positive league for us indoors and outdoors in the future. That's what we're working towards. Just to give you an idea of the popularity, Green Bay held a tournament last summer. They had 72 teams from four different states come to Green Bay to play pickleball. So look it up if you haven't seen it. It's a lot of fun and it's going to be the next big thing here hopefully in Opaaca. Also working on coed kickball. So you'll notice a lot of the sports that we're working on are, are coed and family type events, so we're trying to work towards keeping families together instead of splitting them up and having, you know, dad plays softball, mom plays volleyball, dad plays outdoor volleyball. Every night of the week, we're all split up, so that's what we're working towards there. And if there's no questions on Aaron's report, that's all I have.
Thanks Andy. Nice job. Chief Call?
Thanks Mayor. In your packet, you'll see my month report along with a memo to council. We are continuing to move forward on part-time hire and just an added note on that, this is a supplemental position, this isn't a replacement position. We're actually adding, our intention was to add a second part-time position due to an onslaught of FMLA leave this summer. We anticipate two to three officers being gone on FMLA in addition to one officer who was injured during an arrest and has to have knee surgery. So these are, hopefully to be, the part-time was hopefully to fill some of those vacancies throughout the summer. Budget-wise, at 25% of the year, we're just under 22% and the rest is informational.
Thanks Chief. Henry?
Thanks Mayor. Just a few items. Last week, I attended a CDBG Community Development Block Grant Training Session. Not to give you the gory details, but staff is working on potential proposal to bring to you for maybe accessing some grant monies. They have money for public facilities projects as well as planning. The mechanics of the grant process has changed a little bit because they moved it from Department of Commerce when they reorganized to the Department Administration. So there's all new players wanting to show my face and learn more about their programs. So we do anticipate bringing forward something in the short term here. We talked a little bit last council meeting on community or capital improvement planning and the idea of getting a process together. I did speak with the mayor briefly about this. It looks like, the brief amount of feedback I got from council is we're going to try to piggyback this on to your regular meeting night either 1st or 3rd Tuesday and, you know, break off the council meeting, adjourn that and then go into a workshop for capital planning. So I'm going to get that scheduled together, working with the mayor and get that out to you. Just a reminder, Brad Vigut, and I think I misspoke last week, he is actually coming on June 3rd, the first meeting in June, not the first meeting in May, and I think that's what I portrayed you. So I was in error in that, I'm sorry. So I think the idea was for him to come, talk about debt policy and then in the next month or so, get together on the capital improvement planning. And then the idea would be to have that all ironed out before we get into the operational budget after Labor Day. And then finally, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to talk about this, but I want to thank Jean for her service. I've been here going on 16 years and she's been invaluable. I'm sure when you get her resignation letter and act on it, we'll probably talk a little bit more about this, but she has brought a lot to the table for us. I thank you Jean for that. She's straight-spoken, so you know where she's at when she's talking, which is of great quality of hers. And I think there's going to be some big shoes to fill, but I do appreciate, she's given us six months to fill this position. It's a department head level position. This is a mayor's appointment with your approval and ratification. And I'm guessing I've got to talk with the mayor, figure out our process, but I'm thinking it probably going to be kind of similar, other department heads will, you know, involve a couple aldermen potentially and get, get going on that. The mayor would be involved in interviews and things like that. So again, I want to thank Jean for her service. She's so understated, you know, on that, but thank you so much. That's very nice. That's all I have, Mayor. Thanks.
Thanks Henry. Okay, let's move on then to business. Under new business, you have a license report. Oh yeah. You need to change this. Yeah, you're going to have to read. That's what happens when you alter the script area. Thank you Sandy. All right, we're going to go to new business, but we're going to take number eight first. And this is the Code Red project update and we have, Chief, you want to do the introduction?
Yeah, if I want to just get it started here. Code Red is a national alerting program similar to NICSIL, but it's much more advanced than NICSIL. Everybody is probably familiar with NICSIL and the city does kind of utilize that a little bit now. Code Red is much more integrated into society and communities. In fact, Wataoma County, Wataoma area, I think has already instituted Code Red. Starting in 2015, and correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the county and the sheriff's office is going to be taking over funding of this program. And it's, it's an incredible program that I think each and every department in this city is going to be able to utilize, especially emergency services. And that's kind of where it's geared towards, with the integration of smartphones and that kind of technology. This is what the Code Red is building on. And as I said, the county is looking at funding the entire program next year at a cost of about $25,000. They wanted to get it instituted this year, but the funding is not there and they have been going to different municipalities looking for some contribution of funds. And Andy Carlin is here with Opaaca County Emergency Management and he has more information about the program and how it works and exactly what they're looking for. Andy?
Okay, Code Red is an internet-based program, not housed locally here, so if we had a local disaster here, it wouldn't affect it at all. They have five different locations around the United States, so if one area is hit, our, our data and stuff is still available. You might have heard it called reverse 911 in the past. Code Red is just one of the products that does this. We can send out emergency, non-emergency numbers, we can send out text messages, social media, just, there's a number of different ways to contact people. And we've been working with them, we've got them down to about $13,000 to, for the remainder of this year. And I appreciate Tim helping us with some of the other cities and stuff too. He's made some contacts for us also. It's a, I see the, it, it's great for emergencies, but for a day-to-day service to be able to use this, DPW can use this, Park and Recs can use this, they can have their, their users all set up in there for all the coaches or whatever for baseball and they can send out messages to them. You can drill down data, you can either select a geographic area, you can send a message to the whole city, part of a city, however you have it broke down, however you want it broke down, automatic districts. You can go on Main Street, you can say all the odd numbers on Main Street, so you just get one side. So for DPW to send out messages for a water main break, I mean, you just put your message in, send it out and it's done. It's a great program. They do a lot of the legwork for us with building our database. They go out to all kinds of different places to get the database of phone numbers. It'll have your house phone number. You'll have, you'll have the ability to enter your cell phone number into the system if you want via internet. We'll have workdays set up for people that don't have internet access to come in and set their stuff up. And you can opt out of the program too. You're automatically in it, but you can opt out of it. And Code Red comes in, they do all the advertising and stuff beforehand, get people signed up and do a lot, all the training and stuff. This will be available to all the municipalities, towns, villages, cities for anybody to use. It's a great program. The last time that it was used in an emergency locally here was down in Wataoma. Oh, was that last year? They had a guy, high-speed chase, guy went into a house with a, with a gun and they were able to alert all the neighbors without actually going door-to-door. They could, they could call and talk to them. Once you send out a message, you do get a report back on who actually answered the phone, who went to a voicemail and who didn't answer their phone. Gives us in the emergency field, a lot of information if we have to go get somebody out of a house or something in a situation like that. But there's just, there's more uses than you can even think of for using this. I know Wataoma is very, very, or Wataoma County is very, very happy with it. I think tomorrow, Shawano County is getting the same presentation. We gave it to the county board at their last month's meeting, so kind of a complicated program, but it's, it's easy to use, I've seen it. If you guys have any questions.
I mean, it is comparable to NICSIL, but it, it's like it's supercharged NICSIL.
Right.
Like I try to use NICSIL for a concentrated area for alerts, but NICSIL, you have to have, it's tenth, quarter mile, you can't restrict it down as much as Code Red can.
Right, correct. And we can even, if we had, if Tim needed to canvas all the businesses in, in the city for something, we can just set it up to send a message out to just the businesses or just the residents or everybody.
Yeah, and this is really the way I think emergency notification is going. We're kind of getting away from the audible sirens, things like that to this. And the best part about it is everybody's already in it. You have to opt out. NICSIL is the other way around and that's kind of the hard work that we've been trying to do is grabbing people and drawing them into NICSIL. That's why Code Red does all that work and you're already in it.
And if there's a severe thunderstorm warning or tornado warning issued for our county, it'll take that, that polygon, you don't, we don't get the whole county warnings anymore. They use a polygon of the, of the affected area. And it automatically sends a message to those people at their homes via phone, automatically of the warning, so.
And I guess financially, what exactly are you looking for from municipalities?
We haven't really sat, sat down and figured out exactly what for each community, you know, whatever each one can give just so we can get it going this year yet. Like, like Tim said, we're going to for sure get it in the budget for next year, that we're going to be covering it and, you know, hopefully no cost to anybody. There is, the text messaging and the social media and the emailing, that's all free, we can use that as much as we want. I think we get 75,000 user minutes per year for the county and that's a lot. I think we get 75,000 user minutes per year for the county, and that's a lot. And each message is less than 30 seconds, so. Talking to some other users and stuff, they never even come close to using their minutes up. But if you do use those minutes up, then you buy another package of 20,000.
I got a question. Is, are the landlines automatically included then?
Yes.
Okay. And then if I have a cellphone, do I have to subscribe?
You could just go to the, it'll be a, there'll be a link right on your website, right on the county's website. We'll work with the libraries and stuff to get, get it set up over there where people can sign up. Just, you need internet access to sign up, and you just have to sign up once.
But that won't be automatic? It won't know automatically?
Well, yes, it will. If you've, they drill way down. They get, they get their information from wherever they can. If you have a mortgage with a cellphone number on it, if you have a magazine subscription and you put a cellphone number with it, they'll find all that information.
Okay, and then also, do they, do they go to cellphone towers? So let's say you're driving by on Highway 10, and you get the tornado notice? You know what I mean? Do they, do they go through whoever can reach that tower at the time, or?
Yes. That gets complicated. Right now, the national, if you have a newer smartphone, you're automatically going to get that message if you're by a, by a tower, if there's an emergency watch or warning coming out in that area. But once we have Code Red instituted, we will be able to send out local messages over a cellphone or any cellphone tower in our county. An emergency message, I mean, it has to fit some pretty tight parameters to be able to use that, but, but we have to have a, we have to have a system like Code Red enabled for us, in order for us to use that.
We talked, as, a few staff members talked about it today, and I don't want to take up all the time, but, because there'll be more on this, but Park and Rec uses NICSIL, I believe, NICSIL for, you know, the ballgames are canceled tonight, and such and such. They would have to set up a subset of people, because everybody in town doesn't want to know the ballgames are canceled.
Exactly, yeah. They'd have their own users. Emergency services are a little different than what the Park and Recs would see. Theirs would be like a subscription. People would have to enter their stuff in, or they'd have to approve them into their system.
Or as Josh talked about, maybe we can get their data from NICSIL.
Yeah.
That data and load it into the subset for Code Red.
Right. If you already have a database of numbers, they'll put them in there.
Okay.
So from the memo that you received, Chief, then, we would be looking at a dollar amount sometime this year?
Yeah, I talked with Sheriff's Office, and they were looking at $3,000 to $4,000 contribution from each agency. Just kind of a ballpark figure. I think anything would help. I think it's a big advantage, especially since the county's agreeing to take it over in 2015. But we're going into hazardous warning, or hazardous weather. It's a good time of year to start it.
So are we looking for an actual dollar amount tonight, or are we waiting for the county to make a formal request to us of a dollar amount?
I guess, Andy, would you only proceed if every agency in the county is contributing?
No. We're going to work as hard as we can to get money from, we're working with the highway department and DHS, and, you know, anybody that we think might be able to use this, you know, for little contributions here and there. We're hoping that every community does, at least the larger communities can give something, but, like I said, we're just starting, starting to beat the bushes.
So what I'm hearing is that you're looking to find out if we would be receptive to helping pay for this, this year?
Uh huh.
Right? And then after this, the county would have that in their budget, and we wouldn't have to worry about it?
That's correct.
Okay. So he's not actually asking for an amount tonight, but I think it would be nice if we would let him know whether the city is interested in participating in this Code Red cost for 2014.
You need a motion?
Oh, that would be great.
Okay. I'll move that we support the Code Red program. Dollar amount to be announced later?
Sure. Request it later.
And, and along with that, Jeanie, do we have, like, I'm just going to throw out $4,000, and that's not it, so whatever. Do we have money that we can give to them?
Depends on that heat bill. We're already over. Yeah.
Add it to John Snow Bill.
Take it out of the snowplow bill.
Well, the answer to the question really is, is that we do not have it budgeted.
Right.
So we would either have to look for it within the current budgets we have, or we do have reserves that we could use if we felt that that was a, a very important project that we want to do. We could also borrow from the reserves in 2014 and then budget it for 2015 and reimburse the reserve account. I mean, there's many ways to do this if you have an interest in doing it. Okay? Everybody hear the motion of Deb? Did I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Fenske, a second by Keeland, that we approve of the Code Red project and anticipate a request of monetary amount from the county for 2014 only. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. All right, let's move up, back up to new business. We have license report number 1221. This is a request for an operator's license from a Sue Pemberton. As you can see, the license report is basically asking for, she's asking to be approved. She gave her application, filled out her application, which is on page 236 of your packet. And then if you look at page 237, the memo that Chief Koch has sent to the city council, as well as the letter that he sent to Ms. Pemberton, and you can see that she does have a felony violation that's related to drugs and alcohol. Council, although the chief is not recommending one way or the other here, I think it strongly suggested that this person is probably not bartender license material at this time, unless I hear something different. So you have an option. You can either approve license report number 1221 or deny license report 1221. I don't know how much more.
Make a motion to deny license report number 1221.
Second.
We have a motion by Lockwood, second by Fenske, that we deny the request under license report number 1221. Any further discussion? All in favor of denying this license report, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, next we have Pete Anderson, the approval of the six-year plan for the Wapaka Airport.
Thank you, Mayor. Every few years, we're asked by the Department of Transportation and the Bureau of Aeronautics to update our requests or project intentions to them, so they can put in the budget for our funding that we receive, like what we got for the building and the taxiways and stuff that I've done in the past. This year, when we were filling it out in your, I believe it's going to be in the packet, could I be correct? That there is a statement of project intentions for Wapaka. You'll notice on that, that all years on there have a project number already put to them. Those are things that are put to the council at one time or another and have been approved. However, for 2015, the new one that's on there is the southeast ramp construction, reconstruction. That's a ramp that's actually right out in front of the terminal building. For those that don't know, the ramp would be the airplane parking lot, if you will. I wanted to come to you and ask for you to okay this, to put this on. Last spring, we had, or excuse me, last fall, we had a, the state came out and looked at our asphalt and gave us a kind of a preliminary of how many life cycles we have left on it, or how many years. And that rapidly deteriorated since my last report three years ago. So I moved that on to 2015, and with you guys allowing me, when you, when we have you say yes to this or no to this, this is just an intention, this, if we approve, or you guys approve, to have this on the six-year plan, that by no means means that we have to do the projects that are on that list. It's just, again, for their budget considerations. So it'd be for the southeast ramp, and with an additional tie-downs. I believe that with the layout, after the fuel farm went in, tie-downs are where you can secure an aircraft on the parking area. And I believe from the layout we have now, we may be able to put a few additional tie-downs in during that project, too, which is going to help us during the EAA and busy part of the season. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, on page, thank you, Pete. On page 239 is resolution number 1340. This is a resolution approving of the six-year plan, and as Pete has stated, without reading the whole thing, this is just for state purposes and their budgeting plan. It does not tie the city to any of these projects at this time.
I'd make a motion to approve resolution 1340.
Second.
A motion by Hagan, second by Hackett, that we approve resolution number 1340, which is the six-year plan for the Wapaka Airport. Any discussion? Sandy will call the roll.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Gillian Peterson?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Eric Olson?
Aye.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Aye.
John Lockwood?
Aye.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Deb Fenske?
Aye.
And Alan Keeland?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Again, thanks, Pete, for your presentation. Next, we have the library job descriptions. Peg?
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second batch of job descriptions for our department, and we've worked now on the, all of the full-time positions, as well as three part-time positions. That does bring us closure on that project. It's taken about a year, but it's been worth it. Now we have our job descriptions aligned with an assessment process that is streamlined to make it easier, because we do have about 28 individuals who work at the library. So assessments take some time, but I really feel like this has been a good project. We're satisfied with the results, and we thank you for approving those job descriptions. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Henry, remind me again, this is the library, we still approve their job descriptions?
Yes, they, they're part of our personnel system.
Okay, that's correct.
And there's no recommendation for any pay increase. I think this is just actually reflecting the duties of the jobs, so.
That's correct.
Okay.
I make a motion, we approve the job descriptions listed on the agenda.
Second. Motion by Hackett, second by Keeland, that we approve of the library job descriptions that Peg has, that Peg has listed and is on your agenda. Any discussion?
Voice phone.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peg. Okay, next we move on to license report number 1219. This is the spring election canvas report. Henry, Sandy? I mean, it's...
Alls I've done with the license report 1219 is list how many votes each person received, as well as their write-ins at the April election. And it's been canvassed by my, by Board of Canvassers, and I just need a motion to approve it.
Make a motion to approve it? Second, canvas report?
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Lockwood, that we approve of report number 1219, which is the spring election canvas report. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Okay, under the next section then, is a request from the Sustainable Community Initiative for a farmer's market request for 2014. We have Bonnie Miller in the audience. Bonnie, again, would you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. I'm Bonnie Miller. I'm the Secretary of Sustainable Community Initiative. We've been managing the farm market in the summertime for the city, for the last four years or so now.
Great. If you want to just explain what your request is?
Basically, we want to do pretty much what we've done in the past with the farm market, the Saturday market in the morning and the early afternoon, the Wednesday market in the afternoons, in the same location. I don't think we're changing much there. And then we've also applied for, with the USDA, for the SNAP EBT vendor license. And they'll buy us a wireless reader, card reader, and help us get started with that. It's just a, we have to go through the application process, and they require a number of things. Besides the application, we have to send ID and SSI numbers, and we need some kind of business license in the group's name. And so I've asked if the city would give us a permit. It's just the most efficient thing that would, would get us to that, that mark with the USDA. There are other things that we could do. This would just be the easiest and most economical for us. And then we could spend our money on other things. And that's, that's about, that's about the sum of it.
Okay, so we're looking for two requests here. One, to approve the Saturday and, the Saturday morning, afternoon farm market request, and then also the Wednesday evening or afternoon, late afternoon, farm market. And that would, that's their first request. As Bonnie has stated, that it'll be very similar to where it was last year. It will be on Main Street and then around the corner on to East Fulton Street.
Uh huh.
Right?
And on Wednesdays, we would start on the Fulton Street side, and we've had, to date, four new vendors asked to come in. I don't know how many of them are going to want to be here on Wednesday. I don't anticipate that we would come around onto Main Street on Wednesdays. We do have quite a bit more interest this year than we did last year.
Okay.
They'll all be parked parallel?
Yes.
Peg, go ahead.
I noticed that you're adding a winter market, and it says in the entryway space. Is that in the lobby, inside?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's not on the notes here.
The library doesn't open until 10:00 on Saturdays, I don't know if that's going to be an issue, but we're open from 10:00 to 2:00.
That's my mistake. I thought you opened at 9:00. But that, that is not a problem for us.
So you would be setting up something in the lobby?
Right, in the lobby. And since City Hall is closed, I think we would, you know, focus on this side of the There's right now between four and six of us that come for the winter market. So I think there'd be plenty of room. It seems like a nicer fit. It's close to where we are during the summer, and it's a, kind of a like-minded clientele. A lot of people that come to the library like the farm market. We seem kind of an odd fit at the Park and Rec building. They've been great. They've been very accommodating and gracious, but most people don't understand why we're there when they come in. They want...
And this would just be on Saturday only?
Saturday, every other Saturday.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And you would have to change your hours, obviously, to meet, I mean, the library is the only one that is using City Hall on, right? All right.
On Fulton Street, are you using both sides of the street?
On Fulton Street, are you using both sides of the street? You have a...
No, just the south side.
Oh, east side.
East side?
Yes. Closest to...
At Fulton?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I got me all turned around.
I'm sorry. You're right, we are on East Fulton Street, though. You got that right. I think at one, there was one year where you were using both sides.
We tried to do both sides and close that part of the street off, and then, you know, it was, it was a nice, it was worth a try, but I, I think this has worked out better.
Yeah, you weren't using Main Street when you did that either, right?
Right.
Now, you're, you're using Main Street around the corner.
Yeah.
And if you had four more, wouldn't that be crowded more?
We'll have to, yeah. We'll have to squeeze in a little bit more, and we've asked more people to try and focus on not selling out of their vehicles as much and to get tents, and so that we can get that out of there. I think we can squeeze in.
That would be a good problem to have, probably, is too many people.
Yeah, I love that problem.
Bonnie, on the notes...
Safety and driving, excuse me.
Yeah. On the notes here, you say, and we request an opportunity to sign off on any vendors who register through the city in order to preserve the vendor balance of the market overall.
Right. There haven't been any problems, but we've worked hard to make sure that the market stays... I don't know what the best word is here. We don't want to have, like, too many of one kind of vendor making it...
Saturated.
Yeah, exactly, oversaturated. We're just trying to preserve the viability of the market. And so, it would, because of the work that we've done in that regard, it would be, it would be disappointing if someone just came in and bought their license through the city, and then, for instance, were, you know, maybe they'd be a truck farmer or something that just bought from a warehouse wholesaler instead of someone that was actually a local farmer, or, you know, and then they could undercut everyone else's price. I mean, it's just something that would be detrimental to the quality of the whole market. But again, it hasn't been a problem yet. As we get more popular, it could become a problem.
Thing was, you requested a complimentary annual farm market permit.
That's the second part of this.
Yep. Yeah, that's for the USDA.
Okay, we can talk about that in a second.
Okay, thanks. I just didn't want it overlooked.
Yep, okay. So, this is the motion just for the request to have the farm market on Wednesday and Saturday. Any other discussion or questions? Do we have a motion? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion, we approve all the requests talked about.
A motion by Hackett, second by Olson, that we approve of the farm market on Saturday and Wednesdays in the City Hall, on Main Street and also East Fulton Street.
Senior question. Is the winter market your main to this request? Because it isn't specifically asked in the agenda. Or do you want her to come back on the winter market request, or do you feel comfortable handling that now?
If you'd like to deal with it now, I, I was under the impression it would be in the agenda, and I just didn't, didn't notice that it wasn't there. If we did know now that it was going to be in the, in that space, then we could promote it over the summer months and let everyone know that it would be there. So, it, if you would like to approve it now, that would be helpful.
It was kind of in my motion, because I said...
Okay, everything that you talked about, all right. Okay, everything. Bonnie, what else did you say?
Well, maybe not everything.
All right, so, we're talking about the Wednesday farm market, the Saturday farm market, and then we're talking about the winter marketing, market, which would be every other Saturday. And that would run from when to when?
Roughly November through April.
Okay.
Depending on how much product we have.
Okay. All right, and that was in your motion, Eric? You understood that? Okay, that's the second. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. And Bonnie, you did ask for a complimentary annual farmer's market permit at no cost, which is a value of $75 to the city, so that's why it's on the agenda for tonight.
I would like to make a motion that we approve that. Second.
We have a motion by Hackett, second by Pritchatsky, that we approve of the giving a complimentary annual farmer's mark permit to the Sustainable Community Initiative Farmer's Market. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. I guess we have another one on here too, now, Sandy?
That's the signing off on the vendor request.
Okay, was that included in your...
That was included in the first one, because I thought that's, when you didn't stop it, I figured that that was in there.
Okay, so...
I should, I'll list them from now on.
Are we okay with that? Does everybody understand?
Well, I want to make sure I understand. Who has the approval authority here?
I think it's ultimately City, Alderman, Kealan. I think also Bonnie's asking is when we get, get one, maybe to reach out to her and say, hey, do you know this market? We could ask some questions. And, and again, it's likely it's not going to happen, but at some point, you know, if I'm not comfortable, I'd probably come back to you and say, listen, you know, you want to approve this or not?
I think I included with my note to you the requirements that we extend to vendors that approach us. And that's all, that's all that we're asking of anyone that would come to the city, too. Pretty loose.
Okay, thank you, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next we have a request from the Foundations for Living to sell refreshments during the Friday community band concert. Again, I was just kind of looking at what those refreshments meant.
Popcorn, soda, and water.
Yeah, okay, thank you. It's on page 295, so those refreshments would include selling popcorn, soda, and bottled water during the band concerts on Friday nights.
Does this include an electrical hookup? Do we supply electricity?
Yeah, just as background, they came last year, or the request that you approved, and they had a fairly large operation with a trailer, and they pulled alongside, and we had to block off a couple spots. This is going to have a lot lower footprint. Those of you that have been to the concerts when the International Exchange Committee had a little popcorn machine out, we would just, there's a plug like right at the front of the foyer right out here, and they can plug, plug into there, and then they would bring coolers and have their sodas and stuff of that nature. So, it's going to be a lot, lot less of a footprint than they did, they had last year.
Okay, we need a motion then, if we're so decide.
Second.
Motion by Olson, second by Hackett, that we approve of the request from the Foundations for Living to sell refreshments during the Friday community band concerts. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right, next we have a change order request for the South Park Project. Brennan, is that you?
I can take care of it. This is just a formality this evening. As part of the project, the original bid that came in for bid package D for Masonary, in order to save the taxes on the material, we actu, the city actually bought the material, so as a formality, we need to deduct the cost that we already purchased out of the original contract and have new contract amount with Barron's Construction. So, what is in front of you this evening is change order number one to deduct $10,216.84 from the original contract, because that is material that we already purchased for the project.
Okay, makes sense.
I think it's about a savings of about $550.
Tax savings, correct, yep.
Yeah, and then, you know, playground equipment, we're going to be able to save some money there. Well, it's our direct purchase, but we'll see a couple more of these, I believe.
Most of the, most of the larger contracts that we have, we will see these coming through, whether it's now or at the end of the project, for the material that we have already purchased.
Make a motion, we approve change order number one.
Second.
Motion by Lockwood, second by Kealan, that we approve of the change order request for the South Park Phase One Project. That's a deduct of $10,216.84. Any discussion? This is a roll call vote.
Scott Pritchatsky.
Aye.
Alan Kealan.
Aye.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Eric Olson.
Aye.
Paul Mayo.
Aye.
Jillian Peterson.
Aye.
Deb Fensky.
Aye.
John Lockwood.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
And Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, next we have, already did the Code Red, so we'll move on to communications, recommendations of the mayor. Just a couple of things about meetings, the month of May, we have just regular meetings in May. Brennan, do you have, do we have a special meeting in May? We do.
We do have on the second, Tuesday, May 13th.
May 13th, yes.
May 13th, the strategic planning in library rooms A and B.
Okay, and at our first meeting, we do have the audit report that will be presented to us. We have the, the library board will be making their presentation on their annual report, and Jeannie is saying that that might change the audit report one, I'm sorry. They did request that they, it be moved back, so we'll see what happens there.
Paul? I'll be in Matoyo, May 13th through the 25th, so you know.
Okay, thank you. Sandy, want to make note of that? Thanks. And then, one other thing I wanted to have you think about, and we don't necessarily have to have this discussion tonight, and maybe we'll actually put it on the agenda for next month's meeting, but if you remember, the, the veterans on the city council, we, last year in April, April, we changed from one city council meeting to two city council meetings, and we did that by eliminating the four big committees that we have, which are the, were the judiciary, public works, finance, and personnel. We've had a year to see how it's going. Just thought that maybe we could have some open discussion at our next meeting, just to see what you think's going, how it's going, how you would like to see it changed a little bit, if you would like to see it changed a little, whether you like the old way better. Remember, that is in, we did actually change that in our ordinances, so the two council meetings a month. But again, I, I think it doesn't look, it's a good idea for us to look back and just see what, what our thoughts are on that. So, I'll ask Sandy and Henry to put that on our agenda for our next meeting. I think that's it. Anybody else have anything?
Excuse me, Mayor, did, do you vote on license report 1221?
Yeah, that's when you walked out of the room, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we denied it, if that's your, yes.
Should have told them we approved it then.
Yes, yes, we did, I'm sorry. Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Hagan.
Second.
Second by Kealan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion is carried. We are adjourned at 7:11 PM. Thanks, everybody, have a great day.